Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. It is customary that when we begin our meeting, we begin with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you care to join us, please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here today safely. Be with us and guide us as we contemplate our citizens' business. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Youngblood, and Mr. Carvin for carrying us through that proceeding. Thank you very much. The public hearing agenda items today, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comments slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium down front. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear from the applicant, then those speaking in favor of the application. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on the case before moving on to the next one on the agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make comments. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comments slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the cattle parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property that's in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted either to the city council or the cattle parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and advocates and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines as presented. At this particular time, we will call for approval of minutes for the February meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carvin, second by Ms. Bessie. All those in favor, please vote yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you so much. At this particular time, we'll move into our public hearing. We'll begin with case number twenty-one-SC preliminary and final plat, Moore and Associates.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Andy Craig with Moore and Associates, thirteen-twenty-four North Hearn, Suite 301, seven-eleven-oh-seven. The plat before you is forty additional lots, second unit to the Newcastle Pine subdivision, just an extension of that. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Board members, does anyone have questions relative to this particular application? Any questions from board members? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who care to make comments relative to this particular Anyone present care to make comments? Is anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to application twenty-one SC? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bessie, second by Mr. Carvin. Call for questions. There being no question, we call for the vote. Motion passes, thank you very much. The next case would be case number twenty-eight-SC zoning request, Litten Road Company LLC.
Hello, everybody. I'm Robert Iello. I'm here representing Litten Road Company LLC. We're asking for a rezoning of Audubon Meadows.
Would you please give us your address?
I'm sorry, three hundred Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven-eleven-eleven.
Thank you so much, sir.
I'm here asking for a rezoning for fifteen lots in Audubon Meadows. Audubon Meadows is a restricted double-wide mobile home subdivision that, when the UDC was approved, was rezoned to R-17, which is single-family housing. We have a restrictive covenant that's been recorded since nineteen eighty-six in that subdivision that requires all the lots to be developed with double-wide and mobile homes. And Litten Road is actually asking to reestablish the zoning for mobile homes in Audubon Meadows. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Board members, do we have any questions for this gentleman? Any questions? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none, is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward. You'll have the original spokesperson gets ten minutes. Everyone after that will get three minutes. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address.
Jimmy Sitter, ninety-five twenty-two Teshway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-eighteen. Good afternoon, members.
Good afternoon, sir.
I will need the overhead for my photos. Can you put the map back across, please? I have researched this since last week and through this week and have found several discrepancies in this plat. First thing is, is that when you come in off of Shirley Francis Road, which is at the top end, and you come in to turn left coming in, that is Audubon Meadows Drive. And if you come into Audubon Meadows Drive and you're looking to the right, he's got two lots there on the corner, which that is Bittern Street, B-I-T-T-E-R-N. And Bittern Street goes left and right. Well, when you turn right on Bittern Street, that area back there that shows behind those two lots on the corner.
Sir, can you point to kind of on that where, with a pencil maybe or something?
Yeah. Got a pointer? Okay, I'm sorry, let me do this.
That's okay.
All right, these two lots right here is what is, this is Audubon Meadows Drive coming in from Shirley Francis. This turns right, right here from Shirley Francis. There's two lots right here. This is Bittern Drive, B-I-T-T-E-R-N. And if you turn right right here, this area back here that shows lots in a street and cul-de-sac or circle is not developed. So this is all open, back here behind these lots. Even though behind his two lots, he's got labeled, it shows three more lots backing up to these streets and adjacent lots. That is, this area right here is not there. You got lot here, 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 and here. So this plat is not true today. So that's my first point of view on this area here. The other is, I'm gonna need to put that photo up there. I would ask the commission to take this into a major consideration of this rezoning and request that is being asked for. First off, those two lots that I just pointed out, when you're coming down, this is Audubon Meadows Drive, this is Bittern. So I'm turning right, right here, going back through here, and that is the undeveloped area. This house right here, manufactured home, is now moved in on those two lots that are in consideration with the rest of the lots to be rezoned. So we've got regulations, laws, and other considerations that a house is already here and on site and set down with no building permits, no approval by this commission, no zoning, and then the setback from this point here at the back of the street curve to the house is twenty-four feet. And from what I understand from the zoning and the building departments, that it has to be thirty feet. I didn't verify that, that's just information I've got. Okay, so we've got a violation right here already existing on consideration before it's even considered and already set up. This other area down through here, when I'm looking at this point of view, looking this away, this is, this is that right turn right here, goes back here, this is Bittern Street. This is the area where that cul-de-sac is supposed to go back around, go back up through there, but it's not there, never has been developed. So that's my point of view on why this plat is not accurate for today's consideration. Okay, next one, please. And this is the house on the lot on the corner that he's already set up, been there for over, I understand from information I've gathered, for over a month now. And this area here is what we have to look at every day of what he left from the setup. Next photo, please. This area here is my twenty-four-foot setback that I wrote on this right here from the back. This is the back view of the house. So if you come back through here, you may be, may be in this pine tree right here. So it depends on, depends on the zoning and the requirements of the setbacks, utilities on the fronts, easements on the area. Also, on these lots that we're looking at, there's no survey states, no boundary markers, no red flags, nothing to tell you that this is where this lot start and stops. This should be the setback. On the plat, those other properties start right back here and go around that cul-de-sac and come back to that area through there. You know, so we don't know, we don't know if the trailer sitting, if manufactured homes sitting correct or not. This is, some of these things that I'm gonna point out to you right now are not, are more of a building code violation, construction techniques, and state law of the fire marshal's office, which I will give you information on that in just a minute. When he set this up, it says that you have to have a permanent foundation of a design, which is in accordance with the International Residential Building Codes and also State Fire Marshal's Office. This is sitting on top of natural grass and dirt, and that's it. It's blocked up, got one tie-down on each corner, and then that's how it sets now. These are other piers that he's added on the front, added down through the side. What you look up underneath here, there is no, all this is grass area. Lot was never degraded, de-grass. The foundation of the site plan preparation was never built according to the building codes or the state fire marshal codes on that end through there. It's just set up on a natural lot, no drainage preparation, no crown up in through here, which a crown is a berm or a building pad that they come in and dirt and build up and then drain it away from the house and not underneath the house. This is all flat area. It drains from this back corner coming this way. This is the adjacent lot that he's asking for a rezoning on. And you can see, this is area here that is all, has grown up in grass on that area through there. Fortunately, he hadn't put a home in that area there. Over here, in this area here, is a shallow ditch that drains from the east side going back to the west side that floods. And the property over here that goes down to the corner at Shirley Francis, from my understanding, has flooded several times. So this photo here shows you this lot looking back towards a home and the drainage all coming back this way and back down the hill area. And I'll leave you copies of these right here. This is what I printed off in the state fire marshal's office, a little bit hard to read on that area. But it says, this is in effect as of March twenty-fifth, twenty-ten. Installation standard for manufactured homes. I highlighted site preparation for used manufactured homes. This is section nine twelve point two-two of State Fire Marshal's Office. As to the preparation under home grade, our ground shall be cleaned of all vegetation or organic materials such as stumps, roots, et cetera, et cetera, except grass for not exceeding three inches in height. The area beneath and around the home shall be crowned, sloped, appropriately drained to the water, will not flow or accumulate under the house. All grass and organic material shall be removed and deterred foundation placed on stable soil and compacted field. Okay, so I'm not gonna read all of it, but here we have, you know, violations from one end to the other on this property here already set up. This is from the state fire marshal's office. This shows you the crowns, the correct way, this is for a double-wide. This is the incorrect way here. This is larger homes up through here that are all set, and these are single wides. I'll leave y'all these for your review as well. One other area that I'm concerned with on this setup is this right here, Louisiana Manufactured Housing Commission. This is for the Louisiana Manufactured Housing Commission's installers license application. Now, this installer, whoever it is, or whoever he hired set this house up, from the information that I gathered, was done on Sunday, brought the house, brought the two sections of the manufactured home out, didn't take any consideration that this site plan, site was not properly, not properly prepped and ready for a home to be set up on. Moved it in, set it up, good to go, we're gone.
Just a second.
Yes, sir.
Board members, this gentleman is in the middle of doing a presentation, not just talking, and his ten minutes is expired. Can I get to one to take a motion to extend?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend the time. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, sir, please go right ahead.
I'll talk faster.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just about to wrap it up. And anyway, all of this here, appropriate fees must accompany completed notarized installer's license application. If the installer was not licensed, has not followed the Louisiana State Fire Marshal's application for the installer, and gone through specific training as detailed on this application here, then he's in violation as well as the owner who hired him to move this house in on a site that was not properly repaired, prepared to set this home up. So my question is, is that can this application for rezoning even be considered with the violations that are in front of us now and being presented to you as everything is good to go and I'm gonna redo all these lots? The other thing I have question on is, is that this house, what I estimate is a two-thousand-and-nine used. Well, I brought the used setup on that area. What I'm concerned with is that are we gonna allow used houses in any condition to be brought into this neighborhood and set up and expected to keep the values of the properties up that are there now? And with that, I rest my comments. I appreciate your time.
All right, Sid.
I will leave these two.
Before you leave the mic, please.
Leave the mic?
Before you leave the mic.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to have any questions? All right, Ms. Smith?
Yes. I'm just wondering, how many manufactured homes was in that area before all of these? What I'm hearing is a lot of violations. How many was there before?
No.
It was what?
Well, I'm kind of losing on what you're exactly asking me.
I'm asking, was there any manufacturing homes there? Because what I'm hearing, all of this coming into your area, did you all, as you were saying, you called violation, everything to me, even on the Sunday?
Yes, ma'am.
If I would see that coming into my neighborhood, I would start calling, and I want to know what did you all do from all, what was going on there?
Yes, ma'am. When the house was moved, was brought on site that day, some of the residents questioned the mover on what he was fixing to do. He said, "I'm fixing to unload this house, and I'm gonna set it up right here. I don't care what y'all say."
Yeah. That's true.
So, you know, now, I'm telling you what information they gave me. Okay, but there are some members here that can verify that.
Thank you.
Before you leave the mic, are there any other questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, well, I just have a clarification, so they're just asking for approval of rezoning. The city and the team that you guys have will make sure that all the requirements are met if, right, if we approve in order to bring those homes and in order for the land to be, I mean, for the, for the, for the, all the piping and all the sewer and everything to be right in order to truly, to, I mean, to be able to bring those homes, right, if we approve.
Right, Mr. Roker. Since the manufactured home was moved onto the site, the zoning administrator's been involved in the complaints that have been submitted to the office, and if you'd allow, I'll allow him to respond to those questions. He's been investigating it and everything.
Mr. Roker. No, we were aware when the, when the mobile, when the manufactured home got set in, so we've been on top of this from day one, and it won't get set. There's no utilities hooked up, there's no plumbing, no electricity, nothing has been done, and that's the reason why he's here today, because he, nothing was submitted. So he's gonna submit the proper site plans and get the proper approvals before the mobile home is set, if it's rezoned to allow the mobile home to be there.
One final comment. If you approve this as it sets, the violations are there. In order for him to correct these conditions that he's established himself, that home has to be dismantled, tongues put back on it, moved off-site, building permits issued, building permits inspected, water and sewer utilities connected, and approvals and a correct foundation. And that's what he doesn't have. And so that's the key point of why I pointed out, you know, the violation, you know, you're considering, you know, rezoning this area, and is this what we're gonna get for fifteen or sixteen lots? You know, just move it in, set it up, and goodbye? So that's what, that's what we're asking.
I think you didn't listen accurately, sir. What he was trying to share with you is that this mobile home was just moved in without the necessary approvals and for it being moved into that subdivision. Now that Mr. Iello is aware that this is what has to happen as property owner, he will take responsibility to address whatever has to be addressed. But Mr. Jordan was saying that no electricity or no other utilities, anything will be hooked up to this mobile home as-is.
Right.
Because you're exactly right, it is in violation and therefore not eligible for any services from the city.
Yes, sir.
All right, sir.
Any other questions?
Is there anyone else here that care to speak in opposition to this? All right, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Ryan Cookson, seventy-eight twenty-nine Audubon Meadow Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-two-nine. I wanted to, I wanted to give to y'all our neighborhood covenant that we had redone in twenty-fifteen that states the requirements for the neighborhood that we wanted, the same thing that we were required twenty years ago when we moved in, was to have two lots, a minimum of fifteen-hundred square feet housing, a double-wide. We wanted to keep it double-wide restricted. It's the reason why we went to the city and had this file. Everybody in the neighborhood signed it. We're quite happy with it. We don't want to see single-wide trailer houses shoved in, ten-deep next to me, lowering my property value, and I don't know if y'all ever watched TV, but have you ever seen a single-wide trailer park, what it brings? And really, something else that's not being addressed, can you show that, that map on the overhead?
Aye.
That's the same one. In this area up here where they're showing the creek, all that floods whenever it backs up. There's a city ditch and then there's a parish ditch. If the parish doesn't take care of it, then of course it's gonna back up, and it has in the past. You've been able, we've been able to swim out there before, it's been so deep. Actually, up to this street, Bittern Street, which he was showing earlier where that man set up that house illegally, it floods up to that corner, and nobody tells anybody that. I've seen a dozen realtors come out there, put their signs up, and then I'll walk down there and ask them, "Hey, did you tell those people that it floods?" "What? We didn't know it flooded." And then I show them a video, six foot of water, raging water, and they laugh and they leave. They carried their sign with them. So I'm asking for this to be squashed right now, because we've already filed our petition with the city, and it was granted according to them, where it shouldn't be changed, rezoned for single wides or anything else. Just leave it just like it is, double-wide restricted, two lot minimum, and that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Before you leave the mic, sir, anyone having any questions for Mr. Goodson? Ms. Nancy? Okay. Anyone else having a question?
No.
All right, is there anyone else present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone? Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, sir, you have an opportunity for rebuttal, Mr. Iello.
I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding. I'm here today to get a rezoning for the lots that are highlighted. They are restricted for double wides. This man that put this double-wide there, it is not gonna stay. It is a double-wide. So I believe there's just a little misunderstanding that we're here today for zoning and that's it. I'm not asking to approve the mobile home that's in place or the way it was put in place. I agree also that it was done incorrectly and it will be corrected, so that's all.
Before you leave the mic, sir.
Sure.
Do you realize what kind of position that puts us in when we, I'm just speaking for myself, when we see the picture and you say it's not supposed to be there? And I, and I understand that we're talking about rezoning, we don't have anything to do with.
The reason that, the reason we're in the predicament we're in is because when the UDC was passed, this subdivision that had been there since nineteen eighty-six, there are probably fifteen to twenty existing mobile homes in the subdivision already.
Twelve.
Twelve, twelve mobile homes already there. There are no stick-built houses there. There are no stick-built houses there. The UDC overlooked the fact that these were all mobile homes and zoned it as an R-one-seven zoning when it should've been zoned for manufactured homes. I had a man approach me, uh, I thought the man understood what he was supposed to do. He bought a lot from me. Uh, I made sure he understood it was for a double-wide mobile home. Uh, I took it that he knew what he was doing. He did not. He was a young man and, uh, basically moved this house in, didn't notify me, didn't notify the city. Uh, it was the first time I had sold a lot in that subdivision since the UDC had changed it from R-one, or RMHS to R-one-seven and, uh, that's what basically brought this to a head. So, really what we're trying to do is correct a problem that was created by someone moving a mobile home into a mobile home subdivision that honestly didn't know what they were doing, but I am one hundred percent in favor, the building permit people are going to make this man, when he ultimately gets a permit, if you approve the zoning, do it correctly. Do it using all the right methods. Uh, I'm a licensed contractor in the state of Louisiana, I clearly understand what you're supposed to do to install a mobile home and I was not involved in this, I'm merely the landowner selling it. Uh, I bought sixteen lots fifteen years ago out here in Audubon Meadows. I've moved two mobile homes in, we put them in correctly, uh, in the past, and this is just correcting a problem the UDC created. Because right now, everyone out there with a mobile home, uh, can't even replace their mobile home because the zoning is incorrect right now. So, this will correct a problem for all the remaining lots that don't have mobile homes, uh, and we certainly are gonna follow all the restrictive covenants and make sure that, uh, the place is done, or installed correctly, the manufactured homes are installed correctly.
All right, sir, before you leave the mic, yes, ma'am?
Um, okay, so you, you acknowledge and agree with the covenants that this group has presented, you're saying? Y'all seem to have any agreement on that?
Let me say this, I agree that the original covenants that required there to be double-wide mobile homes, no single-wide mobile homes, is enforceable. Uh, my name is not on that petition, I don't know whether that, uh, that what was filed in two thousand and fifteen is actually effective or not, I don't believe it's effective. Uh, you can't change an existing set of covenants without having a hundred percent of the residents or the lot owners agreeing to a more restrictive set of covenants. Uh, but I can assure you, I have no interest in putting anything but double wides. I stated that in the very beginning when I, uh, brought this up, was that this is a double-wide mobile home subdivision, it's always been a double-wide mobile home subdivision. There are twelve double-wide mobile homes there now.
And how many lots?
I own fifteen additional, I believe, must, and the statement the man made about, we use that as an example, this subdivision was developed in nineteen eighty-six and all the water, all the sewer, everything is city maintained, it's all city approved, there is a portion of the road that is not built, and none of the lots that I'm asking for rezoning now are on, uh, the nonexistent road, I'll call it. That was what y'all had on file for, uh, plat for that area.
All right. Any, any comments from the staff, any more comments from the staff?
Did you have the opportunity to talk to, to, to your neighbors about this before coming here?
Uh, no, I, I didn't, I didn't think that this was an issue when you have all mobile homes in a subdivision and you're merely correcting something that happened that shouldn't have, uh, I didn't expect to get a lot of opposition.
But you're, I mean, you're obviously aware of the flooding situation.
I am very, I am very aware of, the subdivision was designed and built under the city standards and sometimes the water does come out of the ditches, just like it does in any other subdivision in Shreveport when there is an ex, uh, extensive rain.
Ms. Cooper?
And, and you gotta realize that a mobile home is, is elevated above the ground, it's not a slab.
Right. Come, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark or Mr. Jean?
I'm sorry.
Is this gonna, is this a situation, like a backzoning request?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Is this like a backzoning request when people come before us wanting something that existed prior to the UDC?
This, this was, uh, during a time, uh, this property was zone R-one-D. There was a time when manufactured homes, uh, were used as by right in all residential districts and that's why the manufactured homes were there, so, we had this discussion with Mr. Iello and it was not a, a downzoning as a, uh, because of the Unified Development Code, it was just a comparable zoning, that R-one-D is now the R-one-seven in the UDC.
Right, but it has the same effect essentially as a downzoning would've had, because we're kinda dealing with the same conundrum.
It's, uh, we don't, in order to have manufactured homes under the UDC, you have to have either property that is zone RMHS, uh, mobile home park, or RA, which is an acre of land.
And that's not applicable here because of the size of the lot?
These are not applicable here.
Right.
And because of the, the square footage of the lots, I think they're like, uh, what would they, five thousand? Seven thousand square feet, that's why the R-one-seven zoning was attached to those zoning, to those lots.
Through discussions that we had, uh, that I had with Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean, if they would've realized that this was exclusively a mobile home subdivision, when the UDC was basically being, uh, passed, they would've used a manufactured desi, manufactured mobile home designation on these lots, but it's very difficult when you're doing a large mass of land like a city or a planning district to be able to identify every spot where this RMHS designation applies, so as a blanket, they used R-one-D, just like everything in the past. But again, R-one-D in the past allowed for mobile homes.
That is why we recommended approval of the application, because of the conditions and situations that have been associated with this mobile home subdivision. But the lots are, like I said, R-one-seven lots. All right, any more questions from board members? Mr. Iello, thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this particular time?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Elson, second by Ms. Smith, to approve, we call for questions.
Do y'all, I have a question for just a discussion.
Please.
Um, in terms of the objection, does the objection seem to be, is there any real objection? Do they seem to agree? Are y'all thinking, I mean, I'm not seeing a disagreement per se? Is anybody here seeing that?
As I recall, there was a gentleman who made the objection relative to whether or not it was a single wide or a double wide.
That's right.
But, but the double-wide covenant is going to remain?
As I appreciate, that's essentially a moot issue, is that correct, Mr. Iello?
Yes.
And the, and the violations that exist right now will be, will be fixed.
Violations will be monitored by the zoning enforcement section and ensure that the lots is in compliance prior to any, uh, utilities being extended to that lot.
He has to permit, he has to permit.
He has to. We, we, we will prevent anything from happening.
So, this will have to be double wide?
It, it is a double wide, it will have to be, it is a double wide. It'll have to be a double wide, it'll have to be set back appropriately and meet the Fire Marshal codes, et cetera, et cetera.
Now, we cannot, I mean, about the, how new they are, we cannot do anything about that, can we?
About the what's that?
How new they, they are. We cannot do anything about that.
All right, thank you very much, board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question. The concern was raised by some of the residents that it moved in, it didn't have the permit, didn't have the, all the things it needed, and it came in and the guy that dropped it off, he wasn't in charge of that, so, he wasn't gonna listen to it. I guess my question is, going forward, how does that, it sounds like there's more lots there, how does that not happen again? If this one is permitted and allowed, you know, not this one, somebody else, it is for Mr. Clark to answer.
That's for Mr. Clark.
That's for Mr. Clark. But anyway, uh, it, it sounds like this one didn't come in right. How do we know the next one will if the covenants allows a double wide, if it comes in and meets all the check marks? How do, how do we ensure that?
And I let Reg know if he chooses to, to add too, but he has to have a permit and he has to have necessary approvals to be in. That's what stopped this one. If, uh, that, the process wasn't in place and the checks and balances weren't not operating, we would not know that the mobile home is out there and it would be, uh, being lived in and hooked up to all utilities, but that's what stopped the process and any future mobile homes that are moved in will have to go through the same process.
So, if they see one driving down the street, they just call City Hall and says, "Hey, you have a permit?"
If they're applying to call City Hall, they're perfectly welcome to, to call City Hall. What I was sharing with you is that when they come down, uh, contact SWEPCO.
Right.
To get electricity, SWEPCO contacts the, uh, permit center and there will be no electricity extended to the, uh, facility, to the manufactured home.
Thank you, sir.
All right, board members, we have a motion, a second on the floor. At this particular time, we call for the vote, all those in favor, please vote yes. Opposition, please vote no. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the motion is carried. At this particular time, we call for case number twenty-nine, that Z is on a request.
I'm just asking. I'll be in.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hold on just a second, give them a chance to vote to the all of it. All right, sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Sure, Jeff Spikes, forty-seven forty Richmond Avenue, seven-eleven oh-six Shreveport. Um, I'm here to, uh, represent the case for the travel center, uh, or, I'm sorry, rezoning of a site on Hillary Huckabee for a travel center. Um, I believe all the information is, uh, in your packet and, uh, basically it's just, uh, rezoning this piece of land that's in a right now, uh, back to, uh, be in line with the master plan for that area, to I two.
Is that Mr. Franks, is that what you said?
Sir?
Your last name?
Spikes.
Spikes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Board, board, you heard Mr. Spikes, do you have any questions for him?
Yeah, I do.
Ms. Smith, please, go right ahead.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you tell us something about this truck stop? Is that what you're up here for?
Yes, ma'am, correct, yes. It's basically a multi-use facility. It's gonna have a convenience store function, a restaurant, and also a small space for tenant, uh, you know, like a retail type, uh, uh, space. Uh, we'll have diesel pumps on one side and gas pumps out front, so we're trying to keep the trucks and car traffic separate. Um, you know, we've been in touch with the DOTD and we're, uh, doing a trip, uh, uh, we're doing, uh, research on the trips for, uh, to make sure that everything that our site access shows they're okay with. So, basically, it's just a, a travel center like you'd see in any other, you know, uh, area on the interstate. Uh, it's a, it's a really nice facility that we have designed, so.
And how many trucks are you talking about if this truck stop gone?
I believe there's four, uh, diesel pumps, so it'd accommodate eight trucks at a time and then I believe we've got, uh, six gas pumps, so it'd accommodate twelve, uh, cars simultaneously fueling.
And right now, is the flood zone like, right?
Uh, there are some wetland areas, uh, on, on areas of the site, but we've, we've felt done a pretty good job of keeping the building out of that and we're gonna do some mitigation, uh, you know, we're trying to, uh, work around that, but it's such a large site that we've kinda been able to move our construction to the end of the site that, uh, to where the wetlands don't affect us near as much.
And you will be one of the ones operating the spines?
I'm the architect, so I'll, I'll be, I'll be designing it, but, uh, there are, there are some, uh, representatives here today, uh, for, for, on the owner's side, if you'd like to speak with them as well.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from board members, any questions from board members? All right, Mr. Spikes, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening, my name is John James. Um, I live at twenty-two seventy North Cross Drive up on the north side of Cross Lake. Um, I own the property just across the street from this site and, uh, uh, I think it's due time to have some development there. I think it's gonna be really good for the north side of town. I'm excited for them. I, I've never met them, I don't know them, I just know that I've seen them in there across the street as, as I, hopefully one day, um, as a retired firefighter from the Shreveport Fire Department that bought property back in the late nineties, whenever people told me I was crazy for buying it, and, uh, and, and now to, for it to come to fruition of being worth some money, um, I'm excited to do development with my own property down the line, so, I'd like to commend them and, uh, I hope y'all approve the zoning change.
Well, Mr. James, before you leave, would you show us on that map where your property is?
This property, uh, where the water is, where the blue is, belongs to me, straight across the street from there. I, uh, I am familiar with what they're talking about with, uh, mitigating, mitigating, mitigating and, uh, wetlands area, I have a lot of wetlands on my property, and so, I did five years ago, had to get an engineer and go through the Corps of Engineers and get a wetland determination to, i- if any of y'all are familiar with going up down Hillary Huckabee, the, um, you know, I've made a lot of changes, uh, to my property and starting to build it up, but before you can build it up, you had to go to the Corps and get, get the permits and, uh, to be able to do all that, and land altering permits with the city and, and so forth, but the Corps is not somebody that you wanna ask forgiveness for later, as I've learned, and, uh, so, I definitely wanted to ask permission first from the Corps. Yes, and, and get all that in writing, because during winter time, when the waters come up, as you, as, and, and as we've known over the last five years with the floods that the Red River has flooded, I, I have, I cannot, you don't even wanna get me crying up here to tell you how much money I've lost with the floods. So, having said that, you know, I, I, you know, I'm building my place up and it's becoming valuable and, uh, um, and like I said, I look forward to being a good neighbor to the, uh, development across the street and, and so, I think it's a win-win, I think it's fantastic for the city.
Mr. James, I have a personal question for both, where was the crawfish pond at? I, I just had to ask that question.
All right. If, for those of you that don't know, Louisiana crawfish is a, um, crawfish is an agricultural crop. It's just like if you had a garden in your backyard and you were raising tomatoes and you stuck a, a bushel out there in front and said, "I'll sell you ten dollars for a bushel of, uh, tomatoes," you can do crawfish the same way if you own the property. And, uh, and so, I own just under three hundred acres and so, in there where you see the RA, not where the RA is, but to the left where that little, going up towards twenty-nine C where that block is, all of that is a wetland area and, uh, and I have been known to catch crawfish back there.
Been known.
And so, uh, it is, uh, uh, until the rivers got the best of me. When the river got the best of me, it's, uh, the river has, uh, kicked our rear end, as we would say, so.
Mr. James, you're very kind, I appreciate you answering that question.
Not a problem.
All right, any more, any questions for Mr. James? Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this development request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor? Well, is there anyone in the room who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Well, that should put a smile on somebody's face. All right, hearing none, there's really no need for rebuttal unless you choose to come up and say anything, oh, good, that's a good sign, thank you very much. All right, board members, it's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. DiMarito. Uh, call for a question. If any question, we call for the vote. All those in favor, please vote yes. We have, uh, motion passed, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know I'm gonna shock the staff, but, uh, this is really a great opportunity for MLK because most truck stops, uh, have because most truck stops have, in the retail outlet, or the retail sections of them, they bring in fast food outlets, uh, they do Kentucky Fried Chickens, Burger King, uh, and so forth. And there's nothing like that in the MLK area. So as, as this development begins, this could possibly encourage pos- positive investment up Hillary Huckabee going toward the, the MLK area. So, uh, like Mr. James, it's an exciting time. Before that area, it's been neglected too long.
And it brings jobs into the area. I commend them for what they are doing.
All right, counsel, there's one vote for Kentucky Fried Chicken. You heard that. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll move to the next case. Yes, sir. Uh, case number twenty-dash-ten-dash-C, Moore and Associates. All right, Mr. Curtis. That was your club. That was your club.
Andy Craig, Moore and Associates, thirteen twenty-four North Herm Street, three oh one, Shreveport seven eleven oh seven. I was before y'all probably a little over a year ago. And we had this, uh, this area here rezoned for the car dealership, uh, to, from RA to C four. And in the interim, they've decided to add another dealership. They bought another four some odd acres. And so we're just needing to get it resoned to C four also to expand the development. And, uh, we're in the process of getting subdivision plot on it and all that from now, so.
All right, sir. Any questions for Mr. Craig relative to this development?
Can you tell us what the other dealership is? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I was just asking, could he tell us what the other dealership is? I think the...
Well, they're shifting around. Uh, the track we're getting rezoned now is going to be the BMW site, or BMW. On the corner, they've expanded that, and that's going to be the pre-owned. And they're going to move their Cadillac dealership out there in one of the lots. And the other one, they're not real sure about yet, probably an Acura, but that hasn't been decided. That's the names that have been, the dealerships been.
Thank you. Send that call and ask me what's happening now.
We'll, we'll probably have the BMW site planned to y'all pretty soon. They're already working on it.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any questions, uh, more questions for, uh, Mr. Andy Craig?
Andy, do you know what they're going to do with the other BMW dealership if they move out?
I don't now. They were going to move the Cadillac to the BMW and Cadillac decided they want it out here in the new place. So I don't know who they're going to put in there. Maybe, they have one of the dealerships that's going to go in there. I don't know which one they've decided.
Any more questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. Craig. Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. Smith. Call for questions. If there being no question, we call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Oppositions, no. Thank you, board. Thank you very much. We'll move to case number twenty-dash-twelve-dash-C, special use permit and site plan for accessory living units. Yes, sir.
My name is Ward Bryant, nine five seven Ratcliffe Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh four. Bryant, B-R-Y-A-N-T.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is a special use permit for a accessory living unit on the backside of a existing single-family lot. It's four hundred thirty square feet. That's really it. It's that simple.
All right. I'm sorry. Yes, this is case number ten. Do we have any questions for this gentleman, Mr. Bryant?
I do.
Ms. Cooper?
So this is for the, I'm not sure what you're referring it to, as like an in-law suite or something?
That would be the closest thing to say what it is. The house that's existing there is completely maxed out. And the owner's mother has moved from Ohio to live with them. Currently, she's retired and can't keep up the home she's currently in. So they just wanted to make a space where she could be close by. And if they could fit her in the house, they probably would, so they wouldn't have to build a separate unit. And we did look at doing an addition to the home, but nothing would work out outside of giving her some kind of independence because moving back with your kids is probably a big, you know, blow to the ego kind of thing.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? All right, Mr. Bryant, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? So hearing none and seeing none, board, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mr., Mr. Who?
Me.
Mr. Rogar. Thank you. All right. We call for a question. If there being no question, we call for the vote. All those in favor? Now, one thing, Ms. Cooper, who made the motion?
I did.
Would you care to tack on stipulations, please?
Oh, yes, with stipulations, which we didn't ask him if he was aware of them, but...
Got it?
No.
It's at the question, question status recommendation.
Yeah, I was just on the last.
Did y'all add the stipulation, Mr. Chairman?
That's what we're talking about.
Give her a chance to...
Well, it just says the final site plan approval is pending the Z B A.
Yep.
Yes.
Approval. And so you've got, if you, you have to get Z B A approval for the special use.
Read the hard thing.
Okay. Um, final site plan approval is pending zoning board of appeals approval of the variance request. If the Z B A imposes site plan modifications or denies the variance, a revised site plan must be submitted to the executive director for approval. And I assume you, you had that conversation with the staff?
Yes, sorry. We're completely aware of that.
Yes, they told us that you were, but I just want to get that on the record.
No problem. We're aware of that condition.
Okay, so this motion to approve is with those, with that stipulation.
All right. Having said that, ladies and gentlemen, call for the vote, please. All those in favor, please vote yes. Opposition, vote no. All right. Sir, the motion passes. You're quite welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to get to go to church tonight.
Yeah.
All right. We're down to case number twenty-dash-twenty-nine-dash-C, special use permit and site plan, equipmentshare.com, I N C. Is there anyone present representing equipmentshare.com? Please come forward. State your name, your address, and you may begin to tell us why you're here.
Gary Johnson, one-six-three-four-one Hunter's Trail, Montgomery, Texas, seven-seven-three-five-six. We're here in request of a special use permit for this existing facility so we can expand our new, uh, thriving company and be part of the community here.
Would you put that picture of that building up? I think that's the one that we got. Would you scroll down to it? It's on the, it's on your, uh...
This one?
The actual picture of the facility. Yes, with the staff car in front of it.
This is the only one with the building.
There you go.
Okay.
Yes. All right. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? None. What's, none. Okay. When I went through the, the presentation, I thought it was just commendable that you found this place back in the woods. It's, it's really cool. And when I saw the picture, I go, I gotta go see that.
Yes, it's, it's a really nice facility. We're excited about being here. We're expanding company out of Columbia, Missouri. This is Shannon Zamora, the general manager of the store. And we're planning on putting up another store in Alexandria. We're right now in process of building a store in Monroe. I'm finishing up one in Sulphur and commencing permits for Cameron, Louisiana.
Can you give us some idea about the number of employees maybe that would be involved?
This facility here will require a minimum of forty people. Truck drivers, mechanics, service managers, general managers, uh, parts managers, uh, service techs in the field, and yard men work in the yard to park the equipment and keep it clean. And we try to keep our yard as organized and as, to represent our company, keep it clean, looking nice. And, you know, hopefully we get to do a lot of business here. We're looking forward to it.
Well, on behalf of this board, we're glad to have you. Any questions from board members? You look kind of intimidated when you come up, but we've been real nice today.
Yeah. No, I'm good. I'm good. It's not my first time.
This is an example of us working very closely with the economic, economic development section of the city of Shreveport to make this process and transition for this company as easy, as simple as possible. We had to assist them in, in some minor ways, but we were able to do this and ensure that these forty jobs come to the city of Shreveport.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Is there anyone else present? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in favor? Anyone care to speak in opposition? Anyone care to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please. Motion by Ms. DiMorto, second by Ms. Smith. I'll call for questions. Being no questions, we call for the vote. All those in favor, please vote yes. Opposition, vote no. The motion is carried. Gentlemen, welcome to the Shreveport area. Thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's, I hope that we've successfully got to the end of our cases. Uh, the next item is item twelve, old business committee chair reports. As of this point in time, do we have any committee reports that are to be presented? I'm going to ask Mr. Adam to tell us a little bit about upcoming, um, master plan committee meeting and the date and the time.
Friday, March sixth, twenty twenty, eleven forty-five, lunch. Meeting starts at twelve o'clock to one-thirty, master plan advisory committee meeting.
We're meeting at Chiante's or where we meet?
Where we get a sandwich. A large conference room.
The large conference room. Just throw that for the record.
You can get with Mr. Clark on the menu.
Okay. All right. Uh, any other committee reports that are to be made at this time? Uh, very good. Um, we're in the new business, research.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing at this time from research. Other matters to be reviewed by the commission, director's report, Mr. Clark.
I was going to announce the master plan advisory committee meeting, but you took that away from me, so. All of the announcements I had, I made up there, so I have no additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr., what I mentioned to you before the meeting, he said, would you please mention that? And I, I was just...
No, no problem.
Okay, great. Now you got reminded to show up, Adam. That's the thing that's, that's going to be important. All right. Um, public comments. We have anyone in the audience who care to make public comments? All right, very good.
Just acknowledge the presence of Mr. DeVille. He's following us very closely and has taken a true interest in what we're doing. It's always good to see him.
Would you care to tell us just a little bit about what his basic interest has been the last three meetings? This is the third meeting.
Mr. DeVille is, I don't know if he's a member of the Cato Alliance for Freedom, but he...
I, I would be happy to speak for him.
No, we just, we just want to acknowledge your presence. We, we know why you're here. We just, we're glad to see you.
He has, he has had very positive input and what things we need to do with the Unified Development Code. He trusts us. We've been working good together. We plan to continue to work very closely with him.
May I make a comment under three minutes?
You got two minutes.
Two minutes.
Yes.
My name is Bruce DeVille, four oh three Irving Bluff Road, Shreveport seven-one-one oh seven. For you people that don't know where it is, it's up north of town. I'm here, as Mr. Clark knows, about the Unified Development Code. But the reason why I'm really, really here, I was involved with Shreveport Downtown Airport and had a small business out there for a number of years. Now, if you've been keeping up with the news, you know there's a big explosion going on at that airport about privately owned, constructed and owned hangars out there. That committee, that commission, that authority that runs the airports is a city governed body. And I've seen terrible things going out there. Now, without naming names and doing all that nasty stuff, I reported one guy to the Ethics Commission, Louisiana State Ethics Commission. He was found guilty, fined five thousand dollars. And the next year, that authority voted him president of the authority. So my skepticism is always, uh, not in favor of public authorities. But as Mr. Clark can tell you, I am always of an open mind and I want to see what's going on and make up my own mind about this authority, and it's great. I think you guys are working hard and doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We always welcome positive comments about how well we're doing. We really appreciate that. Thank you for being here. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Don't let the volume of my movement or my motion of my, of my...